Second.
Have a motion in second, any additions? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign, motion carried. Item number five, consent agenda items. Approval of the minutes, approval of travel requests, approval of personal action notices, approval of cellular authorizations, approval of human services report. Do I have a motion approved?
Move approval.
Have a motion in second. Any additions, corrections here? Hearing none, call the roll please.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Forsma?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Routine business, approval of claims. I have a motion approved.
Second.
Have a motion in second. Any additions here, Stacy? Hearing none, call the roll please.
Bartley?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Forsma?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Department head reports, Sean, I believe you have something you need to share with us?
Yes, it's actually on Stacy's report later on, but I wasn't here yesterday, so I'm trying to catch up. So I got other stuff I need to work on, so hopefully Eric's coming up to relieve me. We have a proposal from Eagleview, they're the people who do our flyovers of the county every three years. What they proposed to us was basically a, an extension of our existing contract with better imagery throughout the county at a, what I think is a fairly minimal price increase. The increase in price is one thousand seven hundred and forty-three dollars per flight that we usually pay it annually, so it's a five hundred and eighty-one dollar increase per year that we pay. If that gets divided amongst all four entities, it's under a hundred and fifty dollars per entity. If it does get divided that way, we need to get those agreements in place with those other entities for our 2022. And then this would also add an additional flyover in 2025. Right now, this is just the proposal, so there's nothing to approve, we're looking for a consensus, and from there, we will get the official agreement in front of you for signatures. We do have some examples of the increase of the resolution of the imagery. On the left-hand side, we have the, what they call the six-inch imagery, and then on the right-hand side, it's the nine-inch, which is what we're currently paying for. You can see there's a lot more clarity to the images and provides a greater level of detail. We do recommend going this route, especially given the fairly low price impact and low budgetary impact. But it is definitely much, much better imagery. This isn't actually Brookings County, these are examples that our sales rep pulled from other communities where they've done similar upgrades from the nine-inch to the six-inch imagery.
Board? Thoughts? Ms. Pierce?
I'm in favor of this, but I can't remember two things, so you said four entities, it's us, the city utilities, and who else?
It's the city, excuse me, city, county, I believe it's BMU, and E-911.
Okay, thank you. And do they normally fly once a year, or?
Once every three years.
Once every three years?
We had our last flyover in 2019, I believe some portions of that did get extended into early 2020 due to a sudden, everything kind of springing at once when spring hit. We had a substantial amount of leaf cover in some of our images that they, per contract, were required to re-fly. So we were able to see, well, and we are able to keep those original images too, it's just that they aren't as useful because there's more leaf cover.
So 22 is when we would have?
Yes, yes, this would be a 2022 flyover, and then it does include an extension to a 2025 flyover at the same price in terms of what this proposal is. And it was something that was approved in 2018. 2018, you guys approved the, the current contract, and if we were to do nothing, it would continue, and we would have the 2022 flyover with the existing, existing agreement in place with the nine-inch imagery and that slightly cheaper price point.
I would agree that, I would support this. I think that the six-inch imagery is much more defined, I like sharper images.
And like I said, this is just their proposal, so we will get something to you for formal approval in the form of a, or resolution, I believe, or agreement, yeah. As soon as we get that paperwork from, from them. I see nodding, so I will get that started. Thank you very much.
Move forward. Brian, would you like to?
Mr. Chair, could I ask Stacy a question on what we were just talking about? You know, the E-91, go ahead, the E-911 board, do they get money from anywhere other than the city and the county?
So the surcharge money that comes in off your telephone taxes, that revenue all goes to E-911 as well. So it's more than just funded by the two separate entities, there are some other funds that, like tax-type funds that come in and go directly to E-911.
So when they're paying a fourth of that cost, it's not us in the city that's paying it, it's coming out of some other resources?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Morning.
Morning.
March 22nd through the 25th, I attended the South Dakota Highway Superintendent's Annual Short Course. We're very well represented out there, we had fifty of the sixty-six highway superintendents there, and nearly two hundred and sixty vendors and highway superintendents, so it was a very well-attended conference. I was, I was very happy with it, this first meeting we've been able to have as a quorum in, in nearly two, two and a half years, so it was a nice to meet with everybody again to get the networking out, and there's a lot of new highway superintendents out there, so it was a very well-attended conference, I'm glad I went. I'm sure some of you may be seeing the South Dakota DOT's been out with their boring crew, and some of the roads they've been frequenting, frequenting more than off, or more often than others, these are these preliminary engineering grants we got for seven structures around the county, so if folks have been seeing that, that's what's going on there. Little update, you guys approved some right-of-way agreements with some landowners south of Volga. I know there's been some questions on whether or not those structures are gonna take place this year. At this time, the one south of Volga on County Road Five is gonna be waiting until we know exactly what's happened, happening with the Sinai Bridge. We're talking still a May letting for that, and if we can find a contractor that wants to move, move in right away, we're gonna let that bridge take priority over this small structure. I know I've gotten some questions from some landowners neighboring that, that structure. The structure north of Volga, today, you'll be considering the agreements for right-of-way donations from Halens and Knutson. On the 29th, I met with Volga city officials and Chairperson Jensen and Stacy to review the, the RFPs for Smar Avenue. We got four of them. On 331, Bruce Bridge, when I went out to visit that, they're moving along, there's a schedule in my report here, it looks like we're gonna be looking at a completion date still, if they can stay on schedule of mid to late June. So that's moving along quite well. Right-of-way agreements, I know you guys approved a pile of them at the last meeting on the 16th, and according to Valley Telecommunications, that was the Arlington segment of their project, and today we'll be looking at the Volga segment of our project. I'm sure Stacy mentioned at the last meeting in my absence that I've been working on this with Valley since November. March 30, I held a bid opening at 11:00 a.m. for our concrete rehabilitation project on County Road 23, and that will be discussed here later in the meeting. Yesterday, we switched to our summer schedule, 7:00 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. Monday through Thursday, and along with that, we pulled down our load limits yesterday, our roads are holding up exceptionally well, and I know I seen quite a few pieces of equipment moving in the field yesterday, so it's good to see that the farmers can get back in the field. I know we got some, they're talking a chance of rain here, but it's nice to see that again. Coming up here on Wednesday, we're looking at City of Elkton, I know we had a SPN came in and, and gave a presentation last year in regards to this project, they're gonna be looking at closing down that stretch of road on County Road 33 on the west side of the city of Elkton. Their pre-con meeting to start off this year's work's gonna be held on Wednesday at 3:00 in the Elkton Community Center, so if anybody's interested in going to that, I, I will be there. On 316, I made mention of the, the local federal bridge replacement grant program. Little less funding compared to what the, the federal government offered last year, sounded like the state was gonna push in a little more funding in, in the tune of about three million dollars, so we're getting close to what they offered last year, but last year, we applied for three and got one grant. And this year, with the grants that are, that we'd be looking at here, we're gonna be, you know, applying for seven. Total eligibility, if we would get all seven, that's fairly really unlikely, but we don't know, you don't get the grant if you don't apply, so we'd be looking at the tune of about 1.1 and trade for about 5.1. And I have a map depicting that, that will, if Stacy, you wanna show that? That's the schedule showing the, the Bruce Bridge, but the, did, did we get that map, or is that attached later on? And one thing I wanted to point out to, to the commission, there are quite a few of these that are on, on our county highway system, but the majority of these are on township. I wanted to make sure that commissioners are aware of that. Like I mentioned, I think there's, there's two, three on our county highway system, and the other four are on the township system. Are there any questions about any of them? I know if you guys have questions later on when we consider them, but I did wanna point out this map.
Stacy, can you go back to the other sheet for this? Where you had the ranking, is that ranked by?
The, the reason that the, this program is in existence is, it's for structures in poor condition. Last year, if you remember, I brought you a, a list of all the structures in poor condition, and what we did is we broke it down to the structures that were in the worst condition, or what we considered the worst condition to be the most eligible to apply for. So the rank on that, on the side there is what we feel. You know, if you look at the score, it's, it's considered a modified big score, so, you know, we only have, we, we kinda based our cutoff line on that thirty-four, because last year was about at thirty-eight was that, that score cutoff line, so.
Can you tell us which ones are on the county system?
We go back to the map there. B, structure on forty-four, County Road Forty-four, north of White.
And so how do I identify that on the chart that we were just looking?
There's a, well, you'd have to look at the structure number, the O, the O-six is our county designation, and then the, the numbers following would be the structure number. So I, I know it's maybe a little bit confusing, because we didn't put them in numerical order there, but I guess we just based it off of the actual structure number when we went down the list.
Top two ranking ones are on our county forty-four there.
Yeah, yep.
Are, any of, any of these in our five-year plan?
Not currently, but I can't put it into the five-year plan, because they, they didn't make us aware of this funding until February, because we didn't know if the funding was even gonna be available. And like I mentioned last year, this has zero effect on any of the, the, the grant cap that we would, that we would have with the big program. You know, we're, we're pretty near maxed out on our, our grant cap with the big program at four point three million.
Do we, they pay every, you do everything, do we pay everything, and then we re, get reimbursed, or do we have to run through them for bid letting?
At this point in time, you know, we're still gonna be, we're still working on last year's structures, and that, they have a completion date of 2023. And at this point in time, it's still in the preliminary design phase, and what they've done is they've, they've essentially clumped structures together from surrounding counties or areas into one engineer. So when it goes to let, some of the projects may be administered by the DOT, some of them may be administered by the local entities. And that being said, the structures south of town, the, they were administered by the DOT, so they pay all the bills, and then we reimburse them, or the structure north of Bruce, we pay all the bills, and then the state reimburses us. And that's, that's handled locally, so it depends on which structures are administered by the DOT, and which structures are handled locally.
What would be, if we were to get these, would these be local, or, I don't know?
It, it could be a mixed batch of both. Cause that, that's the difference in the funding mechanism, if you guys recall, the, the south of town, we reimburse the DOT, north of Bruce, we, we get reimbursed by the DOT.
Are they telling, in the grant application materials, when they expect the decision to be made on who gets the grants?
That'll be, you know, the deadline for this is April 9th, and then, you know, like I mentioned, we didn't get notice of this until late February. Last year, I believe, we knew with our structure that we got, we knew in June, so I, I would expect somewhere around that late May-June timeline. That way, the reason they do that, so we can get it planned for in the budget.
That's what I was wondering, if we can go by budget plan?
Yep. Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Lori?
Good morning. Let's see, in March, I attended the new officials workshop, that was a lot of fun. It was great to meet the other new officials, and there are eight a lot throughout the state, I was surprised. So that was really good, spring workshop will be coming up in May, and I'm looking forward to that. You always pick up little tidbits that you didn't think about, or that can help your office out. Budget worksheets, those will be going out to department heads, so that's fun, we'll start that process up. Otherwise, we've been busy assisting with the city election and with the bid openings. Yeah, tax, tax cycle starts this month, taxes are due, so I'll be putting something in the paper to remind citizens of that, and that's otherwise just regular work going on.
Any questions? Ms. Pierce?
Where are we at, and when will we see it in our paperwork that we get to switch over to the cash accounting system?
Okay, yeah, State Audit has been busy finishing up some of their requirements in other areas. He said he will be back this week, and we will be able to finalize everything, so crossing our fingers for this week. Yep, and then you'll get your annual report at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Bob, do you have a short one?
Good morning, it's extremely dry out there, we, we've had red flag warnings issued last week. So far, in the last week, we've reported two grassland fires to Office of Emergency Management. April the 3rd, we lost a half an acre and a skid steer to a fire, and then last night, they had a fire, man-made, somebody was out hot rodding in a farmer's field and caught field on fire, so we reported those two. I passed out a list of the upcoming pods, it's important, if a citizen wants to get a vacu, vaccination through the, through the points of dispensing schedule, our next two coming up is April the 15th, and as, as of yesterday, we still had a few slots left on that one, and then April 22nd, after that, it'll probably go back over to, you'll have to call, find a clinic and, and find where it's at. There, those are two main ones coming up, April 15th, and then April 22nd. We are at phase two now, I heard this morning that the governor got her vaccination, because she falls within phase two, so we encourage anyone to sign up. The way that you sign up for that is you call, you go on the internet, www.brokingshealth.org, and if you need transportation there, beta at 692 triple, oh, four, two, 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 four twos, will give you a ride, free ride to get your vaccination, if you're so inclined. And just a couple of things, March 29th, there was a, First Planning District had a Zoom meeting on medical marijuana zoning regulations, that's gonna be a, a topic that's gonna be required by state law coming up, and I know the state's attorney was also on that call as far as, from what I could tell, and so that's gonna be an interesting topic that's gonna come up and have to be addressed in our zoning ordinance, I believe. We received planning, the planning commission received training from Luke Mueller from First Planning District on March 31st, and this afternoon at 1:00, I am meeting with Banner's associate, and County Commissioner, and Jay Gilbertson from East Dakota to talk about the Madera Township Dyke diversion study. And if you're interested, severe weather awareness week's coming up, the week of the 20th through 24th of April, and there's some online spotter talks, April 8th, 15th, and 20th, you have to sign up on the internet to go to. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. It is 8:55, we do have a scheduled agenda item, item A, public hearing in action, approve a retail on-off sale wine and cider license for Good Roots Farm and Garden. Do I have a motion approved?
So moved, Mr. Chair, I'm going to recuse myself on this matter.
I have a second? Have a motion in second? Like to open a public hearing? Proponents, do you have any proponents that like to speak to this issue?
I'm just Bill Ross, with owner of the Good Roots Farm, and just here to answer any questions that you have, as we've applied for this.
Any questions? Any questions? I guess there's no questions, as now. Thank you for appearing.
Yeah.
On behalf of, anything else you'd like to say?
No, not a, there's no questions.
Okay. I'd invite anybody that's opponent, would like to speak. Anybody that's opponent would like to speak? I just, I do have a question, Jenna, what, can you explain this license?
Yep, so currently, Good Roots Farm and Gardens has a malt beverage license, so, which is a fermented from grain, and so they're, they're able to sell on and off sale of that, and then they also have the South Dakota Farm Wine License, which allows them to sell wine made from South Dakota. The license that they're currently seeking is the wine and cider license, which would allow them to branch out and get wine made from all areas, not just South Dakota. So basically, the difference between the malt beverage and then like your cider would just be how it's fermented, you know, is the difference. Cider is fermented from fruit, so, so there's harder, hard ciders, so that would be the difference. I do believe that this is the only business in the county that has this type of license, so this would just give them the opportunity to branch out.
Thank you. Hearing no other comments, I'd like to close the public hearing. Any comments by the commission? Hearing none, call the roll call, please.
Krogman?
Aye.
Forsma?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see, Mike, would you have a short report? We have a couple minutes before next scheduled agenda item.
Sounds good. Good morning. First thing, I guess, is they're, the, the welfare directors are looking at setting up a database, and mostly be tracking people that come in for housing or utility assistance across a number of counties, that's dependent upon how many counties actually sign up for this. The total cost is about twenty-five thousand, which, if there's ten counties that sign up for it, would make it about two thousand five hundred to get it set up. I don't know if there's gonna be a maintenance fee or not, we're in the early stages of talking about it. My, I guess my recommendation was that we sign up, I don't know if it'll do us a whole lot of good, because we do have that ninety-day rule, and so it's not necessarily people coming from, let's say, Minnehaha County into Brookings, as long as they're here ninety days, it kinda sets up a little difference, but we're in the preliminary, he talks about it, so. The other thing I'm gonna say is, on the 15th, there will be a housing board meeting, it'll be held here in room 300 at 12:00, let everybody know that's out there. And I guess if you guys get a complaint about me, I will say that it is true. I had a citizen come into my office, and whenever citizens come to my office, I always put a mask on, and this guy was demanding that I remove my mask. I told him, no, it was my office, it's my right to wear a mask, he said, you're on the county side, you should need to take the masks off. And to me, that, that isn't right, so if they wanna bring something forward to you, that's my side of the story.
Okay.
That's it.
Any question?
Mike, on the group that's putting the database together, what group is doing that?
Right now, it's, it's Davison County, Brown County, Minnehaha, I don't remember if, if Cottington is in it necessarily, those are the ones that come off the top of my head. A lot of the smaller counties, especially the, you know, the, like Sully, I'm not sure about Hughes, but a lot of those counties, Hocken said that they wouldn't be interested in it, because they don't really do that level of service.
I just wanna plant a little seed, and I know that you're not discussing this at this point, but if that gets off the ground, and it goes, and it goes well, this would be the place to have a lien registry for county liens. Just wanna plant a little seed to think about it as you're going down that road.
I'm not completely surprised that you said that.
Other questions? Thanks, Mike. It is 9:00, item B is a second reading public hearing in action, approve ordinance number 21-01, Stacy is volunteering- Stacy has volunteered to read this for me.
I did.
So I'm going to let her. It's quite lengthy.
Okay, ordinance number 21-01 and ordinance amending ordinance number 91-3 and ordinance establishing a county housing and redevelopment commission for the administration of HUD Section 8 existing certificate voucher, moderate rehabilitation and other related housing programs, be it ordained by the County Commission of Brookings County, South Dakota as follows to wit Article 1 Brookings County Housing and Redevelopment Commission. Section 1 created, there is hereby created and established in and for the county of Brookings a county housing and redevelopment commission to administer, contract, control and supervise HUD Section 8 existing certificate voucher, moderate rehabilitation and other related housing programs through the use of municipal, county and federal funds and to exercise any and all powers conferred by SDCL Chapters 11-7 and 11-7A. Section 2, composition and appointment, the Housing and Redevelopment Commission shall be composed of five commissioners. The members shall be made up of at least one resident of the city of Brookings, at least one resident that resides outside the city of Brookings and one county commissioner. The members shall be appointed by the chairperson of the Board of County Commissioners with approval of the county commission. Section 3, terms, the members shall be appointed to five-year terms beginning January 1st of each year. Each vacancy in an unexpired term should be filled in the same manner in which the original appointments were made. Section 4, ex officio members, the Brookings County Human Services Director shall be assigned as an ex officio member of the Housing and Redevelopment Commission. Section 5, meetings, the Housing and Redevelopment Commission shall hold meetings as necessary to complete such business as from time to time may come before it. Official meetings shall be in accordance with SDCL 125-1. Special meetings may be called at any time by the chairperson by giving at least 24 hours advance notice in accordance with SDCL 125-1.1. Section 6, quorum of commission officers rules, the powers of the Housing and Redevelopment Commission shall be vested in the commissioners thereof in office at any time, a majority of whom shall constitute a quorum for all purposes. Each commission shall select a chairperson, a secretary and a treasurer from among its commissioners, who shall hold their offices respectively for one year and until their successors have been appointed. The commission shall adopt such bylaws and other rules for the conduct of its affairs as it deems appropriate. Section 7, expenses of commissioners, no commissioner shall receive compensation for their services, but each commissioner shall be entitled to receive necessary expenses, including travel expenses incurred in the performance of their duties based upon current state rates. Section 8, commission as body corporate general powers, the Housing and Redevelopment Commission shall be a public, corporate and politic exercising public and essential governmental functions and shall have all the powers necessary or convenient to carry out the purposes set forth herein, together with the powers granted by SDCL Chapter 11-7 and 11-7A inclusive. But the commission shall not have the power to levy or collect taxes or special assessments. The Housing and Redevelopment Commission shall have the power and authority to superintend, manage, administer and control federal housing programs within its jurisdiction, including the power to contract with individuals, public or private firms to administer said housing program and on behalf of the commission. Section 9, collection of funds, all funds and revenues derived from the operation of the Housing and Redevelopment Commission may be collected by the Brookings County Finance Office or other, or such other officer as shall be appointed by such commission. Section 10, reporting, in accordance with SDCL 11-7-106, the commission shall keep an accurate account of all its activities and of all its receipts and expenditures and shall annually in the month of January make a report thereof to the Auditor General and to the Brookings County Board of County Commissioners. Article 2, this ordinance is intended to amend ordinance number 91-3. To the extent such ordinance is inconsistent with this ordinance, it is hereby repealed. All other ordinances in conflict herewith are hereby repealed. This ordinance is based upon Resolution Number 91-10 adopted by the Brookings County Board of County Commissioners on March 19th, 1991, and Resolution 91-11 adopted by the Brookings County Board of County Commissioners on April 2nd, 1991. The housing needs addressed and those resolutions continue today and those resolutions remain in effect.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. And I would like to open a public hearing. Would there be any proponents that would like to speak to this item? Is there any proponents that would like to speak to this item? Hearing none, I'd like to offer if any opponents would like to speak. Is there any opponents that would like to speak? Hearing none, I'd like to close the public hearing. Any other comments? Hearing none, call the roll call, please.
Horzma?
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, it's 9:07.
As part of that though, Mr. Chair, there is an action to appoint a commissioner, yeah.
Item I, action to appoint commissioner to the Housing and Redevelopment Commission upon approval of the ordinance. Do I have a motion to approve?
So currently, Commissioner Jensen is on that because it's always been, we've gotten into the habit of appointing the chair to this board. This new ordinance, when it goes into effect, states that it does not have to be the chair. So this action would be to appoint someone to that, to this board and then with the thought that they would maybe more permanently stay in that position and carry that position from year to year and keep that institutional knowledge moving forward.
I believe that Commissioner Krogman had previously said that he would be interested in this. You did say that. Yes, you did. So you, do you want a nomination or no?
The one question I had.
Sitting right here.
You did.
Does Commissioner have to reside within the?
So right now we do have, and Mike can help correct me if I'm wrong, we do have someone who resides in the city of Brookings other than the commission appointee, correct? And we do have someone that is outside as well. So we have those, we have that covered within their current membership without having a specific commissioner fill one of those roles.
So is appointment made by the chair then? Can we approve?
Yes, I mean, this would typically take place on, with all of your appointments at the beginning of the year in January. So it's a little off, off cycle, but I think you could just make the motion and approve some, appoint somebody now and then this would become part of that official listing, January 1.
And this commissioner will be in place for how many years? Five?
Not necessarily, no. This would just be the commission appointee. So it would be appointed, that person would be appointed as part of those annual appointments each year. But for now, what this would be is this person would be there through the end of this year in that position.
I would move that we appoint Commissioner Krogman to serve on the board for the year 2021.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, signal everybody saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Krogman, congratulations.
And then I have a question. Mike said that the meeting, next meeting is April 15th. And will this new ordinance be on their agenda so that it's considered and talked about and maybe that January reporting thing discussed?
I don't set that agenda, so.
Right. I'm just asking the two members of the board.
Mike, who, the, would you come forward? Yeah, the next one is on the 15th meeting. Who sets the agenda?
The next meeting set on 15th is actually set by the housing here in Brookings Housing Office. We can put on there that we will update the list of who's currently on the board. It probably won't have a whole lot of impact, you know, basically because it's, you know, a citizen board and it would just be, when someone resigns, a new person comes on. In this particular case, happens to also be, you know, a commissioner. But I don't view that as being something that's going to make much difference to that organization.
Okay.
But Ram needs to see the new ordinance, what we just passed.
The ordinance, I'll forward on to them. Ram will get a copy of the ordinance, yes.
Thank you. We have about four minutes. Dustin, would you like to give a report?
Morning, everybody. Tendents for the Brookings County Outdoor Adventure Center from March 16th. Gun range, we had 163 people come in. Archery range, we had 147. Last week was extremely busy and we were open on Saturday of Easter. I think a lot of people had family in town, so they came out and tried out the ranges. The events we held, 4H Shooting Sports continues. They have two weeks left before they go to their state match. Brookings Pistol and Rifle Club, they're still meeting on Tuesday nights, but they're kind of winding down. They have to shoot so many targets to send a peer, but I think they've shot a few extras. So they, I think they only have a couple more times left to come in. March 17th, we had a blood drive in the archery range. Just to kind of clear up any confusion, we actually set up tables in our archery range and people come into the facility to give blood. A few people thought they just parked a bus outside, but no, they actually come into the facility, they use our bathrooms, set tables up in the archery range. It goes pretty good. They got it down pretty, pretty bad. We had three private events in our classrooms. Rochester Armored Car used the gun range on March 19th. Midwest Maidens practiced on March 19th as well in the archery range. Brookings County Republicans met on the 20th, their monthly meeting every third Saturday. We had one of our in-house basic pistol classes on the 21st and 22nd of March. The arrow mates, they're done for the year. The last night was the 29th. March, they absolutely love the facility. They're coming back next year, they said. We actually have a guy from Watertown and a guy from Sioux Falls that drive down every Monday night to participate. And they fly little model airplanes in the archery range. They averaged about 10 people. They even, they even got a few college kids to come out this year and participate. This Saturday will be the last night of our Vegas shoot. The Wildlife Federation, they had their monthly meeting April 2nd. Just to give an update on the HVAC of the facility, train installed the GFP heater and it seems to be working pretty good. So hopefully that fixes that problem on the north side of the building there for their offices. I talked to Alex, who's kind of our rep. He said the new unit is still, they're waiting on that and the dynamic filters. Those got a couple of weeks left, he said, before they get those and hopefully everything's installed by the end of May. Just to give an update on our grant that we applied for through Game Fish and Parks, we did not receive that. But I've been working with Sonya on 4H and where they applied for a grant that we might help out with to get some new targets for the archery range, just to kind of replace some of the older ones. That's all I had for my report. You guys have any questions at all?
Any more questions?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to regular agenda items, Item C is 915, an ad hoc drainage committee presentation. Would you guys like to come forward, introduce yourself?
Good morning.
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 I, Mr. Chairman, I didn't get a chance to visit with you ahead of time. How much time have you guys set aside? Oh, hey Ben.
I don't know how long.
Okay.
15 minutes?
Okay, I didn't know. I guess the intent would be that you've all received the report and I assume you've all read it. Most of you have been through these discussions before, so it wasn't a lot of eye-opening information. But when, my name is Spence Hawley. I was late for the first meeting, so I was elected chairman. And it's kind of like Ryan, I feel, I feel your pain. The intent is that we'll just kind of walk through the report and hit highlights area. If you have a question or if we have fellow committee members that want to add some input, we'll just kind of informal from that if you're acceptable to that on it. The, Bob Hill drafted this for us with the help of Ben. And the intent of the, the report was to be a resource for you going forward. The last real discussion that the county had had on this was back in 2015. Before that was your big 1985 study. And it's, we felt that it was important that we document everything that we did and discussed. So it's a basis going forward, so people don't have to reinvent the wheel every time you start this process, which someday you're going to, again, when it starts raining a bunch and we have a lot of water, you're going to have the same discussions again. Committee members, you're all familiar because you appointed them. But for everybody else, myself was on it, Jay Gilbertson from the East Dakota Water Development District, you had appointed to it, Lyle Bowles, retired businessman, Leon Pierce was our county commissioner rep. We had Jim Sampson from your GIS department in the county and Ben Kleijon, Deputy State Attorney, and then Bob Hill from the county drainage. We met nine times. We started in February last year. And about that time, our second meeting, the COVID hit. And so we kind of backed off then into August, then we decided to start meeting again. And we met the nine different times. The next page on, was the entities that, who we visited with, as you can see, we went, we tried, we tried to spread out our discussions and get as much information as we could from experts from the NRCS, the Department of DOT, City Engineers Office, Brookings Utilities, got land south of town we're involved with. Banner's CDI Engineering, they've been involved with drainages for years. Brian, your county highway superintendent, obviously. Several townships, five different townships, we had representatives visited and then some private citizens came and gave some testimony and information on their issues that they had too. The, I, I did want to mention one thing, that we did develop a mission statement at the very beginning. And we tried to redefine exactly what you had asked us to do, and so we came up with that short sentence there. That we were to study the drainage system, include natural and man-made features in Brookings County and make recommendations of Brookings County Drainage Board as to how the drainage system might be proved, improved. And the Brookings County Drainage Board, as you know, is yourselves, so. The first area we started, and Bob was really good about giving us the background on, on Brookings County and what they've been involved with in the drainage. Probably the highlight, just to make a quick comment, and again, if I missed something that you guys think important, step in, please, and tell me if you would. 1985, you had a real large study done on drainage in Banner's, had completed that for you. And you went through it and ultimately you didn't proceed with their recommendation to, for the drainage. First off, for cost, second, as mentioned in here, was dry conditions. And the third was just the ordinance issues that was going on. At that same time, 85, the legislature developed some new drainage ordinances. So then in 86, the commission turned around and adopted a drainage ordinance based off of what the state's requirement was at that time. Then between 86 and 2010, you had different federal court actions, the Clean Water Act. And in 2011, as you know, you repealed your drainage ordinance here in the county. Primarily for a liability issue is the reason you did that. And then in 19, and in 2015, you revisited the 85 Banner study again. And you kind of came up with this, what we did again, is that you kind of left it to individual landowners to clean out their ditches and all that. With the further recommendation that you come back and study drainage periodically. And you'll see, both of those are in our recommendations again, that, to do that. The next parts are, we kind of looked at specific areas. Number one was, Item B was cobert management. Is, that came in our initial discussions and maybe our problems was on coberts and sizing and, and the drainage gets backed up behind it. So we, we talked to your county superintendent on, on that. The discussion came about inventory. The discussion came about inventory and sizing and how it's sized. We brought in the D O T and uh, they talked about, and it's, it's, the details are referenced in here. At the hundred-year flood level plus uh, hundred, ten feet?
One foot.
One foot. I got the wrong number there, wrong decimal. So uh, and we went through, the county has a pretty good grasp on the, their culverts and the sizing on them and, and where they're at. And the, the bridges, as you know, over the twenty-foot handled by the state level, they have a pretty good grasp of it and the sizing on it. There was a couple issues on bridges that had been redone that landowners had testified about. Probably the one area that we found the discussion, we couldn't get the exact answers, was townships. And how many culverts they got and where they're at and the size of the culverts. And uh, one of the references in the back will reference that discussion to go back into their upcoming meeting and, and push the township representatives to give you a better inventory of what they've got. So you're aware of it in the county and through the G I S system that you have and the tracking of them, and hopefully you can track the flow of water a little bit during high water. I'm not going to get a lot of detail unless somebody wants to add something to that, that I've left out for questions. The next area we got into discussion, and it always ends up, this is item C, was the Conservation, Environmental and Land Use Regulations. And, and this was every time that we thought we might have an idea of something that would work that we could recommend to you, it kind of came back to this, is, is all encompassing the control. And primarily where there's been easements sold off and uh, N R C S or uh, U S Fish and Wildlife. And what can be done on that land after that easement's put on it. Uh, and some of these easements are thirty-year easements. Uh, one big discussion we had with the city of Brookings uh, down south, they've owned some land and they have a, an easement with sixteen years left on it. And it's uh, right along South, Midary Way South. And uh, that accumulates water. And we thought it would be great if we could, Lyle thought it would be great. If we could clean that out and move water down faster to get it to the river faster. And but uh, as, and, and the fact that the city owned it, it was even tougher with the easement requirements and the permission requirements and the Corps of Engineer requirements and everything that comes on. So those, that kind of became the over encompassing, and we, we did visit with uh, Jeff Vanderbilt from the N R C S office and discussed about these easements and what we can do in these easements and, and who can do it. The bottom line is, is that the county would be extremely difficult if, if you get in to cleaning up land. Uh, the requirements, first off, that you have uh, to, on easements, the second, the cost, and the third item, the legal liability that you assume when you get into it. So we thought, well, then we, you can help the landowners with this, uh, on the easement issues, but then the landowner still has a requirement, he needs to go back and with his legal attorney and with his uh, uh, if anything, has an easement on it and needs to find out what he can do on it. That led us into the discussion on municipal rural drainage. Uh, we ended up focusing, uh, there was, the main issues we tried to focus, rather than having it being so broad in our discussion, we focused south of Brookings down to the Sioux River. In that area and the S curve, south there uh, habitually is an issue. And, and you've all had people come for you before about all the issues with the drainage. And we thought, well, we just need to visit with the city and, and they're dumping water there and, and it's not moving out and all those discussions that come about it. So we, and so we had uh, the City Engineers Office, I mentioned Jackie Lanning came in and, and we talked about the city's water drainage and, and, and what they're doing and, and their planning on it and uh, their retention ponds that they're creating and new developments and all that, and, and what's happening so it doesn't make the drainage south of town worse. We got into the discussion then, if we get, if we get it past Brookings and we get it past there where they have an easement on the land south of town, then well, maybe we can just clean out that drainage area to the Sioux River. Well, the B M U then, we had a discussion with, where the new sewer, or the, not new, the sewer treatment plant is. And that was, they had sold that off in a wildlife, a wa- a wetland easement. And so when they redid the sewer treatment plant, they had to get permission to do that because of the easement. Uh, and if we wanted to go through and clean that area out to move it faster to the river, uh, it probably isn't going to happen because of the easement that they got on it. So, so it comes up of kind of a blockage area that it just slows down. Now the, the real problem is, is you get the two conflicting interests. The reason, reason for those interests are to, to put the wetlands back and to hold water and to keep it for wildlife and, and for cleaner water, because it filters the water getting out and all that. So, so we want to move the water through there and there's a program specifically made to hold the water there. So you end up with the two conflicting interests in there. And that's what we keep running into all the time. Kind of, the further discussion then on, on, well, how could we drain the water? And, and what could the county do and what can landowners do and then that's that E, the districting and danger and drainage projects. The uh, first off, the first comment we made is that a Brookings County drainage, drainage projects needs to benefit the entire county. Not just a small group of people in one spot in the county. And that, and that's kind of a parameter that we used on it. And then we talked about maybe allowing drainage districts for localized projects. We determine that you as a county can't go in and drain and, and go start digging across the la- the land out there. So we have what, if the landowners do it, fine. Landowners don't have the means to do it, but maybe we could act as the entity, you as the county, to uh, to run the project through and you could assess their taxes for ten years, uh, spread it out whatever form, uh, was what we investigated. And, and Ben did a lot of work in this area investigating the drainage and water laws. And, and the bottom line, he kind, he came back and said, hey, if you do this, the county assumes the, the task or the legal liability. And uh, I just don't recommend that, we cannot recommend to you that you should do that based on your legal liability you assume. Uh, there had been over in uh, uh, Kingsbury County, a project done. And they, from uh, south of Lake Whitewood, they had cleaned out a waterway and, and drained it and everything. Well, as, as we got in and we had the representative come over, uh, Jason Peterson with C D I, who was the engineer in the project. And this was an old drainage project from the early nineteen hundred, nineteen eleven, nineteen fourteen. They dug this drainage ditch back then, they set up a, a drainage uh, entity. And that entity had never been dissolved. And so when the new nineteen eighty-five laws came in, basically impeding you from creating these drainage districts, they were grandfathered in. And so they kind of resurrected that, cleaned it out and assessed all the landowners along there and, and it worked perfect. But uh, so that is the one example we could find in South Dakota that, that did work. But uh, again, based on the eighty-five laws, the Clean Water Act, everything else that's been created, it, it's almost impossible to do that today. And, and that kind of comes back to why we couldn't do it and uh, and I'm just trying to, that was a real big summary of the next three pages is what that was, of why we can't do it. And again, uh, Ben is our, is your expert and he was our expert on why we can't do this and legal. And I guess he can go into it more involved at this time or with either a separate time, but uh, and that you guys have had these discussions in the past, I believe, too. So, did you want to make comment?
I can elaborate a little bit. Um, so, so again, I'm Ben Kleijon, I'm the Deputy State's Attorney here. Uh, I did graduate from Drake Law School ten years ago and I did get a certificate in agricultural law. Grew up here in Brookings County, so I'm, I've been having this sort of conversation about drainage my entire life. Uh, and I will continue to have this kind of conversation for the rest of my life. This is the final report of the committee, but it's not the final word on drainage. There may be some temptation by folks to just go and do it. Uh, you don't, that, that's not a good way to resolve drainage issues. The hard costs of uh, digging drainage channels and, and getting equipment aren't the problem. The problem is the soft costs, permitting costs, uh, the jurisdictional problems. And of course, in this country, we have federalism, and so the federal government has some jurisdiction over navigable waters. It's been that way forever. Uh, but since the seventies is really when the federal government started to uh, tighten its grip on its jurisdiction. And it's never been tighter than, than it is right now. There perhaps was an opportunity in the eighties to do projects like this. Uh, or, or larger drainage projects with minimal permitting requirements, those, those days are gone. Uh, I don't envision they'll be coming back. However, there is still a mechanism where you can do drainage projects if you have the political willpower and the, and the financial resources to do it. But you have to engage with the Corps of Engineers and it's a time-consuming, expensive, uh, costly process. That process may happen. I watched the, the city council forum on Saturday. Obviously drainage is an issue in everybody's mind. And so that process may happen. That's part of the reinvestigate every, on a periodic basis. Uh, that way, when the time comes where we have no other choice but to engage directly with the Corps of Engineers and try to solve some of these problems uh, in a more comprehensive way, we can, we'll be ready. And so that's kind of the biggest, the biggest issue in my mind is that, is that federalism, that jurisdictional problem where uh, the federal government has decided that the Sioux River, the Big Sioux River is uh, under their jurisdiction and anybody that changes the water that's going into the Big Sioux River better, better cooperate and get the appropriate permit, permitting. And particularly that's true if you're a governmental unit, like the commission or like a district created under South Dakota state law. They especially have to follow those, those federal regulatory rules. Now, there's some private landowners uh, that have gotten away with some things uh, that have gone under the radar over the years. We don't have that option and we certainly don't have the option of allowing any landowner to do something like that with, with commission money. And so that's, that's another uh, aspect to it. And so I think this conversation is going to continue. Some of it depends on the administration. There may be an opportunity in the future, but I, I'm envisioning continued engagement with the city and with the, with county stakeholders and eventually with those federal stakeholders. Because the time will come when we don't really have any other choice. And I'm just, at this point, it's not something that we have necessarily the ability to do, but, but it may happen sometime in the future.
Okay, thanks. What, I mean, what, what uh, do you are requesting from us? Well, okay, if I might just go to page eleven, the, we had ten recommendations.
You're fine.
If that's kind of what you're asking?
Yeah.
Yeah. So the uh, I mentioned continued drainage studies periodically, number two. We talked about the townships develop a robust inventory of culverts. Uh, I think then that's something specific that you can do with your townships right now. Number three was coordinate with city of Brookings long-term planning, specifically land south of town with the easements that's coming off in, in ten to fifteen years. Avoid issuing grants to long, to landowners. So we're saying, don't do the grant program. Uh, adopting a new drainage ordinance uh, was repealed in eleven and the bottom line discussion is that you're unable to create a new drainage orders right now under state law and federal law. Six is the encourage landowners to clean out their ditches and their own waterways, but with a caveat that they need to make sure they can do it. And secondly, under the, the twenty fifteen Clean Water Act, that they don't throw any of their uh, stuff into the drainage, into the uh, the area. Uh, consult, we talked about, number eight. The entities, it's just you need, from your standpoint, you need to make sure that all of your bridges and culverts are the correct sizing and they're kept clean and all that. And then down to the township level. And uh, the big discussion there is that you need to probably work with the townships and we recommend that there be research if they can give them further assistance. Uh, nothing new to you, their budgets are almost minimal and they physically don't have the ability to do anything unless they do the work themselves. So I, that would probably one specific item I think that you could be looking at going forward. The other one is that the drainage laws in the state needs to be changed. I was on a three-year task force at the legislature and uh, ultimate futility and I thought we were on the correct direction. You, you all should not be managing drains, drainage. And uh, it should be done on a statewide basis and that's where back then, we had set up the seven drainage districts, uh, river water basins. And that's how it needs to be managed. And the, at the end of that, we did get those seven districts set up and then it stalled at the state level. But that needs, and somehow you through the county need to go back, I think, with all the counties and, and really push this issue. Uh, it's, it's a difficult issue, but the only way it's ever going to be solved is if the state steps in and, and changes our ordinances. And then the, another immediate thing that could be done is that uh, education materials, drainage seminars. Jay with East Dakota Water Development District volunteered at the district. They, they could provide some resources, they could provide, if you want to put some seminars on and what's going on. Uh, and then the, the bottom line question is if it dries up now going forward, you probably aren't going to have a lot of people at the meetings or worried about it if, if we have rain. So, so that was it. Uh, uh, we spent, we, I think we looked really in depth at the issues and, and we, we truly tried to find some uh, solutions. And just every one we came at was just kind of like, well, yeah, it's a great idea, but, so.
Did, did you want to make comment, Lyle, at all?
Well, I guess the thing I would, I would say is, you know, it's really disappointing to get down to the point and learn that we've governed ourselves out of options. And uh, because the rain keeps coming. The problem's still there. People's homes are being uh, damaged. None of that's changed, none of that's going to change until, but we have the ability to change that if we figure out this solution. Because the people downstream, what we didn't get in the report was, I went down, I, on my little project there, I got ourselves a quote from two different people. So from the Sioux River, the Thirty-second Street, which is, we all know where that is. It was like fifty thousand dollars, two quotes, to clean that out. Well, you guys can't participate in that, but the, but the amount is pretty minimal. And that's a huge problem with the, because that's where all the water from Brookings Dangir goes down that. There's a little waterway to the east and then there's some to the west, but that's the big majority of the city. So with all these roadblocks, I still think that now, we're in a drought, cleaning these waterways out would be very, very inexpensive. And so I think that it's something that should get, like Spence said, attention. Because, you know, it's going to flood again and then we're going to stand around and say the same thing over. Unless we figure it out, and I'm sure there's got to be a way. But these are the obstacles. That's really what we found, was the obstacles. And we also found that, you know, I think that cost is, you know, so relatively small compared to what we're thinking in the past. This is just dealing with the rushes and the reeds. Not dealing with wetlands, it's just putting the uh, drainage way back to the original flow. It's just putting the drainage way back to the original flow. And it's... So I really do want to encourage you to really take a really hard look at this, because now we could do a lot of good for a little bit of money if we can get it figured out. Other than that?
If you do need to put a caveat, you can do a lot for a little bit of money if you don't get involved. Truly.
That's true.
Once you end, you're going to have to do the studies, you're going to have to get banners, you're going to have to go to the Corps and everything, and somehow it needs to focus down to the landowner level is what it's going to have to do, and I don't know how you do that.
Is that kind of what happened with the seven districts that you were involved with, that got set up, and it sort of just dissolved?
Okay, in my opinion.
Is that still an ordinance that's there to create those districts?
Yeah, the seven districts were there, and it turned into a feeling that what was trying to happen was to create an anti-tiling legislation is kind of what happened. We had a meeting in Mitchell, 100 farmers, landowners showed up, and it was almost like a lynching mob. And one guy said, "I've bought three tiling machines, and I'm going to tile everything before you blank-blanks shut me off." And that's what the attitude was. So I mean, which, that task force was not there. It was a drainage discussion, but it evolves to that level so quickly, and then they just shut it down so that nothing could develop further. So we need to get past that in the real answer, and the state still needs to push forward. Every county, every state around us manages by a water basin and the drainage of the water basin. We are the only state in our area with all of our surrounding states managing it at the county level. And as you know, you're not doing that because you've all had to back out of it, and you've got the one up the north is just getting... If they didn't already abandon their ordinances, they're going to abandon their ordinance here real shortly. So it's, to me, and the pressure's got to come back, I think, from the counties, that something has to happen.
I want to... The reason why we worked on the south part of the county, because Mr. Sampson had the stuff up here, and all of the, you know, 90% or whatever of the disaster events in the last two years were there. It was red blotch. So that's really where the focus is. And number two, I would like to mention that you have a bunch of landowners out there that are eager to get some help in any way, and I think what we've learned is we can pull this together, and we can find the information, get the right information, and make sure these guys get that, because they're eager, the townships are eager to get some information that they can go forward with. So I think that that's the study, to get that information of some way that they can do that, because they're the ones suffering. They're the ones suffering. So we've got some good help there if we can just figure it out.
Other comments? Ms. Pierce?
Just a couple of things. As an elected official and as a lawyer myself, I hate it when people say, "We can't do something that is a good choice because of a law." And we know from other projects that we've worked on that if we start talking about things with our legislators, with our congressmen, with our senator, when we're talking about the Clean Water Act, and talk about the problem that the current rules make for us, and I like what Lyle said about it being a roadblock. Well, roadblocks, you can move the barrier, and then you can have free flow, right? We can change those laws, we just have to keep talking about it. And when we reach out to our intergovernmental groups and stuff, this should be one of our topics that we put on the list to say, "We need to fix the drainage laws. We need to work together. We got to fix that Clean Water Act so we can use our natural waterways." We're not asking to drain the areas with the easements, we just want the natural waterways to be opened up where there's stuff in there that's not supposed to be there, so water flows where it's supposed to flow. And I think if we start talking about it and we make a practice of telling people about it, maybe eventually somebody will listen, they'll go to Pierre, maybe it'll go to Washington, maybe we'll get something done, but it's got to start at our level if we want to fix that. But the thing, the other thing we can do now is, and maybe Brian would be willing to come back and give us a report at some point about what our policy is on our county culverts. I'd like to know, how are we making sure that we're not contributing to the problem where we have free flow of water in the ditches out in the county? We just need to be sure, and I'm not 100% sure myself, how we make sure that that happens. And then the last thing I'd like to say is I want to thank all of you guys. You know, you just did a wonderful job. We had interesting meetings, we had public participation. Ben did a fantastic job on this report, and thank you all for the help you did in participating on this.
Well, that's all we have.
All right, Chair.
Counselor Hines, I started the report.
Yes, yes.
I don't want to thank you, but I appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Move on to item D, following Drainage Committee Register of Deeds 2020 year-end report.
Good morning.
Morning.
On the screen, there is the spreadsheet that I did a comparison between 2020 and 2019, so it's got all the totals. On there, the first line is the transfer fee, and in 2020, we had $200,002.50. That is a decrease comparing to 19 of $5,482. General fees is on the second line, and that is general fees, it's the $30 per document that we charge for the recording fees. It is also UCC financing statements, and we had one location notice this in 2020. The total was $205,724 compared to $151,181.75. We had an increase in recording for $54,542.25. The third line is marriage licenses. That basically stayed the same, $8,560 compared to $8,680. Certified copies, that's birth, death, and marriage certificate, certified copies of those. The fee is $15 each, and we issued 2,438 for a total of $36,570. We decreased by $4,185. Copies and discs. The copies are the physical transfers, which is the PTs of the... That we give or sell copies to Farm Service Agency in Brookings, and also the farm credit services in Watertown. And also includes the copies that the title companies get, and that was $7,349, an increase of $3,385. We can go further down. The next section there with general fees is just kind of a breakdown of the total finance... The UCC's was 478, decreased by 197, and then, like I said, we had one location notice. The next section is the certified copies, the total for the birth, death, and marriage broken down. And the next section is the general fees, and out of those general fees, which are the recording fees, comes the tech fee, comes out of that, which is $5 per document. $3 of that, $5 stays in the county, and $2 we send to the state, which is the South Dakota Association of County officials. They keep track, every county does that, and in August, what the state receives is divided among the counties, the 66 counties, and we each got $5,094.20 of that back. That was passed by the legislature to help the counties, the register of deeds offices with the technology that every county needs to have, and not every county can afford it. So it's a great thing for our office to be able to purchase software and computers and the technology that we need to preserve the documents. If we go on further there, where it says certified copies are broken down in like that fourth section, for the county share, we keep $5 of each birth and death certificate that we issue, and we keep the entitled $15 of each marriage certificate that we issue, and that's broken down on that. We kept $15,980 in the county, and the state was received $20,590. The marriage licenses that we issue is broken down to $30 of each marriage license. The license costs $40. $30 of that stays and goes to our local domestic abuse shelter, and $10 stays in the county for the general fund. And at the end there, I have broken it down and included what stays in the county and added that tech fee back in, and I have it... I don't think that's in its entirety on that. I think, yeah, go a little bit farther up there. Thank you, Stacy. And there's the total compared to 20, from 2020 to 2019, what actually stays in the county. A lot of the increase, of course, was with our real estate documents. I have included, the second sheet there is just what's broken down for the each month. As you can see, January and February is typically our slower months, but as you went through the year, you can see how much it increased. From January 2020, we did $23,913.50. We go then to December, we did $49,140.50. The interest rates and lots of many, many, many people refinanced, which increased our mortgage recording. It also increased our miscellaneous documents, which includes satisfactions of mortgages, addendums, continuations, all that type of thing that is included with mortgages. And on the last page that I've included there is just a comparison of 2020 and 2019 of the different types of documents, and how many records we recorded and how many pages there was. I keep track of the pages because one of the title companies purchases copies, and they pay per page. But keep track of that. Any questions?
Ms. Pierce?
I have two questions. Okay. Thank you for the report. That's all good news. Any update on when we might be looking at electronic recording on our deeds?
I have been talking a bit with one of the companies, Simplify. I'm impressed with their process.
Are there other counties in the state that are using that?
Yes, that is the most popular one in the state, and I have talked with other registers of deeds, and you can have more than one company, but most of their documents go through Simplify.
And is that with Tyler, or is that with somebody entirely... Is that with Tyler, or is that with somebody entirely different?
No, it's an entirely different... It's a... When a bank, let's say a bank, would like to do e-recording, they have to go to a company that, kind of like a portal, I don't like to use that term, but kind of like a portal, and they send the documents to that company, who then checks it over, receives the payment, then they send, then that company sends it to the registers of deeds offices, and we check it over to make sure that everything is correct, and we either can accept it or decline it, reject it. But according to state law, we have to have that company or portal in order to do that.
And then my second question has to do with the bill that I think came out of your state organization on the marriage license requirements and the unintended consequences where women can't assume their maiden name in a divorce decree any longer. And I understand that there's going to be maybe a new bill that'll come back to fix that problem next year, but what I'm seeing is a lot of conversation about changing the marriage laws and maybe modernizing those for the state. Is your organization working on that, and are you going to keep us updated on that?
That bill was actually brought forward by this, by a representative from Minnehaha County. She came and talked to our group to see what the majority was in favor of doing, and it did get changed from the original intent. The intent was, there are surrounding states that have on their marriage licenses and on their certified copies what the parties intend to use as their last name after marriage. Our certified copies of marriage, when they come and get their certified copy after they've gotten married, has only their names on prior to marriage. So some of the people that are married in South Dakota and live in another state have had difficulty with their driver's license, to just, you know, mention one, accepting the certified copy from South Dakota because it does not specify the intended name. That was the intent of the bill to begin with, to change our marriage license application and the certified copy to reflect that. There has been some, the way it ended up, it is difficult to interpret the correct or the intent, and I know there has been people that have perhaps misinterpreted it, so that needs to be cleaned up.
And I think the governor came out at the end of last week and said that she's supporting some legislation to fix that next year, but I was just curious about how that process would work, because I think there are going to be some other things that'll be changed that'll impact your office when that... Because all this conversation, looking at this bill now, really does highlight some of the things in South Dakota law on marriage licenses that are really antiquated, so...
They haven't been changed for a long time.
Yeah.
True. Any other questions?
Thanks, Bev. You know... 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 You know...
Misty?
Good morning.
Morning.
I'll be short and sweet. Um, I just want to let you know, our truck drivers, um, are, I don't, I should word this different, are half part-time highway department, part-time weed department. Truck drivers are coming back next week. Excuse me, April twelfth. And then we also did get two ATV drivers hired. One's not going to be able to start until April nineteenth, and then the other one will be starting May eleventh, so. Kudos to that. So next week, we'll go gung ho getting our vehicles out of cold storage, putting them, making sure everything's the way it should be, road ready, and well, you'll see the guys out there doing pocket golfers also, because they're digging. It's been beautiful. Otherwise, I don't have anything else at this point. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Marty?
Morning.
Morning.
Just a quick overview, um, jail statistics. I have thirty-four in presently in jail. And, uh, with twenty-four seven is, is gradually increasing. We have a hundred and four participants. I have thirty-seven that come in twice a day. Have two on a drug patch. Uh, we have, um, nine on remote breath test. And a remote breath test is where we put a gadget in their car and they have to blow every so often to keep their car running. Or if they don't blow it, disables the car. We have four on work release. I have, we have nine, nine individuals on GPS. So, uh, we've, we've went back, in our twenty-four seven program, we had kind of loosened up a little bit with COVID about, um, uh, if they violate, depending on the, uh, charge that they are, that, uh, violation on a minor, uh, charge. And if they blew hot or something and they weren't that intoxicated, they weren't intoxicated and stuff, we, we gave them a warning. Where we're back to, you know, if they blow hot, they, they stay in jail. And we already had individuals were kind of taking advantage of us when they knew they might get a break. And, uh, so far, so we're back to when they violate, they, they stay in jail for forty-eight hours, so. Uh, just a couple of things, and just to make you aware of, and I did send out emails a while back, and if you're like me, you probably don't read everyone word, word by word. But just for your information, there's been a couple of counties already, and there might be more. Bennet County and Fall River, uh, their county commissions had, uh, um, did resolutions on, on First Amendment, or excuse me, Second Amendment, that they are sanctuary counties. In other words, that, uh, they said that they wouldn't assist with the feds if ungotten confiscations or something like that, or executive orders. I should say executive orders. Just something to be aware of. Of course, I know a resolution is, don't, has a lot of teeth in it, but, um, you know, just something to think about. Just the fact is, we own a gun range and we're into, you know, uh, law-abiding citizens should be able to, we should protect their Second Amendments. And, and I think we do a good job with, uh, with the OAC, with recognize, rec, you know, for fun shooting and then for basic, uh, safety and that. So it's, it's, these resolutions for, especially out West, is because there are large hunting area and, and there's guns and they, you know, it brings in a lot of money to those counties. So just, just for your information, that's, uh, I don't know if, if you will see more of that coming around or not. Also, uh, I have staff working on, on schedules. There's scheduling, basically, I don't think you're probably too worried about how we're going to schedule when it comes to the new jail and those types of things. Yeah, I'm sure you're more worried about what the cost is. And so, um, we got some preliminary figures. I want them to run a couple of other areas before we present it to at least a couple of you commissioners first and see if we're in the right direction. You know, there's always been a talk with, um, part-time employees. And, and we, we struggle with part-time employees. You know, we probably, um, we probably hire ten a year, maybe, maybe more. And there's a cost to training and we have them for a short time. If I can keep a part-time employee two years, that's, that's, that's beneficial for us, or a good thing. You know, we always were talking about leaning towards more to full-time employees, you know. So, you know, that's what we're trying to, going to present to you, um, you know, some cost savings by going part-time. You know, there, there may be some sticker shock here. Because, uh, with a bigger, uh, facility, and naturally, we're going to have to have more fi, full-time, we're going to have to have more staff. I mean, there's this, no doubt about it. And, uh, you know, if I have thirty inmates or, or sixty inmates, it's going to take the same amount of staff to, to run the place. So we're, again, we're, we got some preliminary stuff. There's a couple more, uh, areas I want them to, to explore and try to come back with some cost savings. I don't, you know, versus having eighteen full-time people, uh, excuse me, eighteen part-time people trying to fill in some, some areas with, um, uh, full-time. And so, uh, they're just, we're probably running out of a little time here because we're going to be working on twenty-two budgets. You know, we're going to have to worry about when are we going to open the jail? Are we going to open it November first? So are we going to have November, December costs? And when are we going to start to hire? Am I going to start to hire in September to get people trained? So when the new jail opens, they'll be ready to, you know? I'm hoping that some of the present staff I have part-time have indicated that they would like to go full-time. So that will help on training costs and so forth. So just, that's kind of some of the things we're working on. Also, I just touched a little bit on, we had an emergency committal, um, Friday night. Uh, we had a little glitch at the hospital. This person, uh, the glitch was we couldn't find a bed. They couldn't find a bed for this person. Yankton was full and Avira, uh, was full apparently, uh, didn't want to take this individual. This individual was causing a disturbance at the, at the hospital, um, to some degree. But they wanted to push, and I shouldn't say push, they wanted the, since there was no beds, they wanted the, the jail to take him. And the jail, for this particular person, the jail was not the right atmosphere. First of all, I didn't, the person also had a wheelchair. Uh, all I had was isolation cells. This, this person, it wasn't, it wasn't a good fit. But it ended up being that they were able to place the person, um, at Avira. But we just had a little glitch. Bart's working on a report, and I'm going to give it to all you because I think you should be aware of the report. We weren't very, treated very well with some hospital staff on this. And, uh, Bart held his ground. He called me and I says, I'll back you up on, on which, on your decision. We said that we had put a guard on this person and, and everything. But, uh, jail was not the place for this. Statute twenty-seven eight dash ten dash one, dash two says, "The jail is not a proper place for people with mental illness." It is, could be a last resort. In other words, if everything's exhausted. But the problem I have right now is this, I just didn't have a space for. Even if she would have been charged with a crime, I don't know what, I still wouldn't have taken this person. I was going to have to stay at the hospital and, and then put guards on, on the person, but just to make you aware. I know the hospital was flush frustrated, uh, because they've dealt with this person before. My office, we have dealt with this person before too. So there's, there was a lot of frustration on both sides. But anyway, but just, but I'll, I'll get you guys the report that you can, can look at and stuff, so. Other than that, um, unless you have, you have some questions. Bart and myself will be, uh, at a sheriff's conference, the nineteenth through the twenty-second, along with the police chiefs. And I look for a lot of, uh, a lot of things going on. There's a, there's a correctional officer training for Bart. And then, uh, I'm sure we're going to be talking a lot about the marijuana stuff and, and things like that. So it's probably going to be a worthwhile convention, so. Do you have any questions?
I have a question. Is the hospital honoring our agreement that when we have someone that's an involuntary commitment, that they make a safe room available and we provide the guarding? Then that maybe needs to be a conversation that we have outside of what's going on with this individual person, because that is the agreement that we had with the hospital.
And see, and that's the issue. They, they don't have a safe room. They talk about a safe room, but it's a safe exam room. It's not a safe room where the person has a bed that they can lay on and, and be sedated and, and this type, type of stuff. So they don't have, you know, uh, in, in, in the new facility, we do have that capability. Uh, in this particular case, I don't even know, with my safe room, can I say my safe room? The county's safe room. When we build it, if I still wouldn't have taken this, this person needed to be in a medical setting to be watched continuously by staff and make sure her blood pressure and things didn't happen. And, uh, we were willing to put guards up there if that was an issue. You know, the city police was up there, they brought her in. And, um, you know, we offered to, to put guards on this person. But again, uh, they were able to, to get them into Avira. So then, uh, two deputies transported this individual to, to, uh, that's the only thing with the safe room is that they, you know, this is something that's not new. We've been, I've been dealing this ever since I've been elected sheriff and even prior to when I was on the police department is that, you know, these, the safe room, I always wanted the hospital to have a designated safe room. But, uh, again, and I understand they're, they're, they're not a mental health facility, but the jail's not a mental health facility either, so. But it's just one of those.
And I don't know what staff turnover there's been there and who everybody's working with and all of that. But that was our agreement when we gave the hospital all that money, that we were going to have that problem worked out. And if we need to go back and, and have another conversation and review what our conversations were before. And I think we have that in writing, but I'm not sure. I think that's in the procedures that the hospital drafted at that time, but that's just my recollection. Our staff shouldn't have to put up with that. It's, it is hard enough for law enforcement to deal with mentally ill people without also having to have an adversarial, uh, conversation out at the hospital at the same time. And maybe, um, if that's an issue, maybe we need to be working with our liaison to have that reviewed.
I think, I think once the report is handed out to everybody and everybody can understand it was in the report, maybe the individual at the hospital wasn't aware of our agreement. And, uh, hopefully, it can be reviewed and, you know, move forward from there.
And there was a lot of frustration. I understand it. What's good about this, it, it doesn't happen real often. This is just one of those cases that did come up, but there's just a lot of, uh, when they do come up, it, you know, my job is to try to keep us with, protect you, the county for exposure, you know? And, uh, I don't want anybody to, to, you know, get hurt in, in our jail at presently, especially when it's not suitable right now for this type, type of person. But I'm not so sure that I would have accepted this even with our safe rooms before. It needed to be in a medical, medical type area, so. And I'm saying, the hospital, you know, it, 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 it's, uh, you know, a lot of times, these things work out. It, but there's just, there was a lot of frustra, you could tell there was a lot of frustration on, on, on their part up there, because they were trying to deal with this person too. And, 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 uh, they were just looking for a place to put her, and so, but.
And it's always training when you have a turnover in personnel, which maybe has happened.
Yeah. So, and the biggest thing is that we're, we're trying to train law enforcement to recognize these individuals as having a mental health, um, episode and not a criminal episode. And, you know, and they're talking about charging the person up there, says you have to take her once we charge her. If I don't have a place for her, I can't, I'm not gonna, I'm still not going to do it. I would, I still would have kept her, said, we, she needs to stay at the hospital. I'll put a guard on her at the hospital. So, anyway, we'll, we'll keep, keep moving. So it wasn't going to be short or sweet, I guess. I'm sorry.
Get us the report. Moving on to regular business, item number eight, action approved resolution number twenty-one dash one-one, a federal aid bridge program resolution for county and urban projects for structure number zero-six dash two-ten dash one-nine-eight. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion in the second. Comments? And these are the seven projects that you presented to us earlier, correct?
Ryan, you want to turn your microphone on?
Um, you'll see the first rank there is the, uh, the big score in that first column on the le, or towards the left. That's, uh, the ranking according to the modified big score. And then the ranking on the far right, uh, that just ranks, you know, where it sits at as far as what, what it costs the county.
Okay.
So just wanted to point that out also.
All right. Any other questions? Call the roll, please.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Forsma?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item B, action approved resolution number twenty-one dash twelve, a federal aid bridge program resolution for county and urban projects for structure number zero-six dash two-four-eight dash zero-four-zero. Do I have motion approved?
Move.
Second.
I have motion in the second.
This is on our county system, or county road system and county road forty-four.
And what, what was its ranking? I'm trying to bring that little sheet back up.
Uh, that was, uh, ranked seventh.
Thank you.
The first one that you approved was ranked sixth.
Thank you.
Call the roll, please.
Bartley?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Forsma?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item C, action approved resolution number twenty-one dash one-three, a federal aid bridge program resolution for county and urban projects for structure number zero-six dash one-six-zero dash zero-one-seven. Do I have motion approved?
Move.
Second.
I have motion in the second.
Uh, this is in Eureka Township and, uh, modified big, big score ranked second.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Krogman?
Aye.
Forsma?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item D, action approved resolution number twenty-one dash one-four, a federal aid bridge program resolution for county and urban projects for structure number zero-six dash two-eight-seven dash zero-four-zero. Do I have motion approved?
Move approval.
Second.
I have motion in the second.
This is on our Brookings County Road forty-four, and this ranks first according to the modified big score.
Call the roll, please.
Forsma?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item E, action approved resolution number twenty-one dash one-five, a federal aid bridge program resolution for county and urban projects for structure number zero-six dash one-nine-zero dash zero-four-one. Do I have motion approved?
Move.
Second.
I have a motion in the second. Comments?
This is on, in Argo Township, and it ranks fourth, um, according to the modified big score.
Call the roll, please.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Forsma?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item F, action approved resolution number twenty-one dash one-six, a federal aid bridge program resolution for county and urban projects for structure number zero-six two-zero-nine dash one-zero-zero. Do I have motion approved?
Move.
Second.
I have motion in the second.
This is in Austin Township, and we applied for this bridge also last year because the grant we did receive was, uh, in very close proximity to the one that, uh, we got last year.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Bartley?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Forsma?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item G, action approved resolution number twenty-one dash one-seven, a federal aid bridge program re, resolution for county and urban projects for structure zero-six dash one-four-zero dash zero-two-one. Do I have motion approved?
Move. Second.
I have motion in the second.
Eureka Township, and that ranks fifth, according to the modified, modified big score.
Call the roll, please.
Krogman?
Aye.
Forsma?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item H, action approved abatement number twenty-one dash one-two, an abatement application made by Madison Aircraft LLC for parcel number four-zero-nine-nine-one dash four-zero-zero-zero-five dash zero-zero-zero dash two-zero in the amount of one thousand three hundred and ninety-eight dollars and ninety-one cents. Do I have motion approved?
Move.
Second.
I have motion in the second. Comments? There ring none? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carried. Item I, action approved agreement number twenty-one dash four-zero, a State of South Dakota Department of Transportation Bridge Improvement Grant Agreement for Rehab or Replacement, Local Administration for Structure Number Zero-Six-Two-Eight-Zero-One-Something-Two. Do I have motion to approve?
Move.
Second.
I have motion in the second. Comments?
This is a grant we recently received here in February on This is a grant we recently received here in February on Brookings County Road Number Thirty-Five.
And do we have our cost on that already in the budget?
Yeah, we had it at the five-year plan.
Call the roll, please.
Forsma?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item J, action approved agreement number twenty-one dash forty-one, State of South Dakota Department of Transportation Bridge Improvement Grant Agreement for Rehab or Replacement, Local Administration for Structure Number Zero-Six-Two-Two-Seven-Dash-Two-Three-Zero. Have motion approved?
Move.
Second.
Have motion and a second. Comments?
This is a structure, again, we were awarded a big grant recently on, uh, in February, and this is south of Aurora in Trenton Township, in a Trenton, or it lays on a Trenton Township road.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Forsma?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item K, action approved agreement number twenty-one dash forty-two, an agreement for voluntary right-of-way donation between Brookings County and Ron Knutson. Do I have motion approved?
Move.
Second.
Have motion and a second. Comments?
This is a structure I mentioned earlier, uh, the north of Volga on County Road Five. Um, it's structure zero-six-one-hundred-one-twenty-two U, and we will be looking at replacing this structure sometime this summer. And at that point in time, I will give you guys an update before we do start that project.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carried. Item L, action approved agreement number twenty-one dash forty-three, an agreement for voluntary right-of-way donation between Brookings County and, and John and Mary Highlands. Have motion approved?
Move.
Second.
Have motion and a second?
Same project.
All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carried. Item M, action approved agreement number twenty-one dash forty-four, an application for occupancy of right-of-way of county highways made by Sioux Valley Energy and Midary Township. Do I have motion approved?
Move.
Second.
Have motion and a second. And comments?
This is part of their project they're doing, uh, going from overhead to underground.
And then the next few of them are same comments?
Uh, the next one is the same and then, then we get into the valley.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carried. Item N, action approved agreement number twenty-one dash forty-five, an application for occupancy of right-of-way of county highways made by Sioux Valley Energy and Midary Township. Do I have motion approved?
Move.
Second.
Have motion and a second. Comments, uh, similar to the last? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carried. Item zero, R-O, action approved agreement number twenty-one dash forty-six, an application of occupancy of right-of-way of county highway made by Valley Telecommunications Co-op on County Road One. Do I have motion approved?
Move.
Second.
Have motion and a second.
Like I mentioned earlier, this is the, uh, Volga segment of, uh, Valley Telecommunications, uh, buried fiber optic line. And, uh, I, I don't know if Stacy mentioned it, but I do, I did require them to obtain or the contractor to obtain a fifty thousand dollar bond, uh, in case our infrastructure would get damaged in the installation process.
All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carried. Item P, action approved agreement number twenty-one dash forty-seven, an application of occupancy of right-of-way of county highway made by Valley Telecommunications Co-op on County Road Three. Do I have motion approved?
Move approval.
Second.
Have motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carried. Item Q, action approved agreement number twenty-one dash forty-eight, an application of occupancy of right-of-way of county highway made by Valley Telecommunications Co-op on County Road Number Four. Motion approved.
Move.
Second.
Have motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carried. Item R, action approved agreement number twenty-one dash forty-nine, an application of occupancy of right-of-way of county highway made by Valley Telecommunications Co-op on County Road Five. Do I have motion approved?
Move approval.
Second.
Have motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carried. Item S, action approved agreement number twenty-one dash five-zero, an application of occupancy of right-of-way of county highway made by Valley Telecommunications Co-op on County Road Number Six. Do I have motion approved?
Move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carried. Item T, action approved agreement number twenty-one dash fifty-one, an application of occupancy of right-of-way of county highway made by Valley Telecommunications Co-op on County Road Number Seven. Motion approved.
Move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carried. Item U, action approved agreement number twenty-one dash fifty-two, an ac-, application of occupancy of right-of-way of county highway made by Valley Telecommunications Co-op on County Road Eight. Do I have motion approved?
Move approval.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Item V, action to approve agreement number twenty-one dash fifty-three, an application of occupancy of the right-of-way of county highway made by Valley Telecommunications Co-op on County Road Ten. Do I have motion approved?
Move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carried. W, action approved agreement number twenty-one dash fifty-four, an application of occupancy of county right-of-way, of county highway made by Valley Telecommunications Co-op on County Road Number Twelve. Do I have motion to approve?
Move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carried. Item X, action approved agreement number twenty-one dash fifty-five, an application of occupancy of right-of-way of county highway made by Valley Telecommunications Co-op on County Road Number Thirteen. Do I have motion approved?
Move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carried. Item Y, action to approve agreement number twenty-one dash fifty-six, an application of occupancy of hot, right-of-way of county highway made by Valley Telecommunications Co-op on County Road Sixteen. Do I have motion approved?
Move.
Second.
Have motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carried. Item Z, I think we covered all the county roads now, haven't we, Brian? Action approved the low bid from Diamond Surface Incorporated for the twenty-twenty-one Brookings County Concrete Pavement Rehab Project at the bid amount of seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two dollars and ninety-eight cents. Do I have motion approved?
Move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Comments?
Yeah, you can see the, uh, engineer's estimate here from IMAG was seven hundred and eighty-three thousand, five sixty-two thirty, so we did come in, uh, lower than the estimate. Um, I had asked the City of Aurora officials if they wanted to attend this bid opening, uh, just to kind of get an idea of what we were looking at. But, uh, after talking with, um, IMAG, uh, IMAG representatives and, and Larry, I think at some point in time here, I know we're gonna be getting the approval today and then we'll get, uh, some of the contract documents in place. And then at that time, we're gonna have a pre-con, uh, with the City of Aurora, um, just so everybody knows what's going on out there and the construction schedules. So, at this point in time, uh, this is just the first step in the process would be approving the contract of diamond surfacing.
And this is County Road Twenty-Three from Highway Fourteen to?
Three Twenty-Four.
To Three Twenty-Four. Any other questions? There ring none? Call the roll call.
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Forsma?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item AA, action approved the purchase of a mobile fingerprint, fingerprint computer system. Do I have motion to approve?
Move.
Second.
Have motion and a second.
Good morning again. Just, uh, I can give you a big song and dance about this, but I'll try to just give you a, a short portion. Is that, um, the fingerprint machine we have now is a large fingerprint machine and it's not movable. I mean, um, it is movable if you, if, if, if you wanted to put it in the new facility, um, uh, when we come, uh, and you got, it's gotta be hooked up to the state and so forth. So it's not, it's not portable where I could just take it one day and move it. But, and now they have a, a portable machine, is that we do a lot of civilian prints. Now normally we do around about eight thousand dollars in civilian prints. Now last year is probably, it's probably down just due to the fact of COVID and so forth. So around, we do, um, you know, all the, uh, nurses, a, a big portion of the nurses, um, also, uh, any teachers and things, we do a lot of civilian prints. And right now we gotta, it's so hectic right now with civilian prints because, uh, uh, they have to come into the front and we gotta escort them back and, and, uh, so forth. Now when we get the new, um, expansion, the fingerprint machine's gonna be back in the booking area. So now we're gonna bring civilians back into the booking area because it, because when we do civilian, or do prints for inmates or for ones that have been arrested, of course we want them in a confined area. So, so with this portable one, I can put them up, put that anywhere. I can put it up in the front lobby or whatever. Uh, it can be taken out to, um, OAC, uh, for public relations, uh, when they do the enhanced, we can do them, do them out there and so forth. Also, um, I'm gonna try to restrict some of the class one misdemeanors that are coming in. Um, a lot of times off the interstate, the troopers and so forth want to, want to bring in, uh, revoke driver's license and those types ones are class ones, but they're really a low-grade class one. The problem is, is they have to be fingerprinted. So if we write tickets to them and just give them a court date without having to bring them into jail and do a, do a PR bond and all that, we have to, at court date, then they're gonna be instructed to come over and get their fingerprints. Well, some come over and some don't. You know, over COVID, um, there was a lot of class ones that we didn't get fingerprinted and they were supposed to come and now we're gonna have to find them and, and bring them in for fingerprints. One of the things with this is, and I talked to Judge Stotnerberg about it, is that on third floor where that, kind of that, uh, waiting area is for drug court, actually on court date, we could, I could put a correctional officer in there with this and do the fingerprints out of that room. That way we got them because they're already there for court and then we could just, just do them there. So, um, you know, I, uh, I, I'm not gonna say that I can absorb this in my budget because my budget is gonna be low anyway, just for the fact is that if we opened up the expansion, we're gonna have to put money in my budget anyway. So, that's, in, in, in a nutshell, it's just gonna be more convenient. I can place this anywhere to do the fingerprints. So it's portable. It's just a smaller machine and it's not even that big, it's just a, a small one. So that's, that's, that's what I'm looking to do.
So essentially will you have two then?
Pardon?
Will you have two fingerprint machines then?
Yeah, we'll have the big one, that, that's on a grant through, through, uh, the South Dakota, um, through South Dakota. But this one, uh, of course we have to pay for the line to pier and so forth for, for the, for the big machine. My biggest thing is just having to bring these civilians into, you know, into the, uh, security area. And of course that room right now is, we use it for everything. And, uh, on hectic days, when we're fingerprinting inmates and, and new arrests and then we got fingerprints coming in, it gets to be, gets to be hectic. And, uh, this seems, uh, uh, there's just, it, there's just a lot of, lot of, a lot of confusion, not confusion, but it's just a lot of, uh, wait and, you know, civilians have to wait until I get the inmate out of that room and so forth. And then we're doing UAs in that room. It's that juvenile holdover room that we started as a juvenile hold room, that's the fingerprint room, but we use that for everything. You know, fingerprinting, uh, nurses meet with inmates in there, it's just, it's just kind of hectic, so. Where this now, we could, I could put this up in the front lobby and actually Heather, uh, both Heather and Matt, both my, um, uh, front lobby people, uh, came out of the corrections here, so they could fingerprint if we had to, you know, they could do some fingerprint up front, so.
Any other question?
I just was wondering, how do you download off the portable then into the state system?
It just go, it, we just put, it, just download it onto a printer and then print it, print the, print them out. So, we'll have a printer with this. I'm gonna work with, um, they, they, um, they, uh, estimated a printer, a quote for a printer too, but I'm gonna work with Sean, um, and see if, uh, any of our printers are capable. They have certain requirements for a printer and just see if any of our printers are capable. Otherwise I'll, I'll buy the printer that goes, goes with this, so. goes, goes with this. So, but what you do is you can, you can, you can put them in, let's say that if we wanted to go out to the OAC and we could take the printer along with us, do the prints, and then we could just put them right on to, because civilian prints don't go to pier. They don't go to the pier. So we can just print off the prints and just hand it to the person.
But if you're doing the class one misdemeanors up on third floor?
Up on third floor? What we, we would do up there is, is that we would just do the prints and then bring the machine back to our place and then print off the, print off the prints and then just mail them to pier.
I, I guess what my question is, I'm not opposed to, to this. It's, are we jumping the gun there? If, is it going to need any special cabling or anything like that?
No, no.
Long term that it would impact on what we're doing on the remodel?
No, no.
And, and I'm concerned and I'm looking forward to hearing what your proposal is on the FTEs you're going to need. If you have a mobile one set up for civilians and you've got one over in the booking area for defendants, are you going to need extra people to staff this mobile one?
Well, you'd have to, somebody on staff could run that. Actually, like, I'm thinking about at this time putting it in the 24/7 area, which they'll have a staff in there. And actually, my 24/7 person probably could do the finger, do that, do the civilian prints out of the 24/7 area. Because, you know, with 24/7, that's going to be separate from booking and everywhere. You know, there's going to be times when people come in. See, because on 24/7, a lot of the blowing ones that blow into our, our machine, they come in, you know, six to nine and then they don't come back from six to nine. And of course, then there's, there's UAs and stuff. But in between times, there's, there's time to do the, do the printing. So I'm not looking for additional staff just to run the civilian prints, if that makes sense.
That was the question.
Yeah.
Call the roll please.
Krogman?
Hi.
Porzma?
Hi.
Pierce?
Hi.
Bartley?
Hi.
Johnson?
Hi.
Motion carries.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. My staff is going to be happy.
Action BB, action approve request to fill vacancy for the BCOAC assistant at the Brookings County Outdoor Adventure Center. Have motion approve.
Move approval.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any comments?
Uh, so this is the new position I've been asking for. Um, we changed the title to BCOAC assistant instead of office manager. Uh, it's also a grade four, uh, which last time I presented a grade five, but everything else stayed the same.
Stacy, I don't have my wage chart. Can you tell me what?
What grade four is?
Yes.
Seventeen fifty-seven.
Thank you.
Per hour, seventeen dollars fifty cents per hour.
So you can see on, what I have up on the screen now is the budget impact for this year yet. So you can see that the full year, the budget impact would have been about twenty-five, five, but we're looking at closer to that eight months. I mean, by the time we get this advertised and get somebody onboarded, it would probably be closer to that May timeframe. So we're looking at a budget impact of about seventeen thousand. And I know there's maybe some reduction in part-time hours and whatnot that this will help. I think Dustin plans to handle that within his budget this year.
Any other questions?
When do you start the advertising?
We would start advertising probably today if you approve it.
Thank you.
No other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Item CC, action approve a request to fill vacancy for a senior finance assistant in the finance office. Have motion approve.
Come on.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any comments?
These actually, these next three vacancy requests are due to either resignations or promotions within departments and then there's a position to fill. So that's what these next three are for.
Okay. Lori, any comments?
Sure.
Um, the first one is to replace a position that was formerly mine when I moved into the finance position. Um, the second one is to fill a front desk position. That gal moved back to my position. She started last week and is doing great, so.
Okay. Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion carried. Item DD, action to approve a request to fill vacancy for a finance assistant in the finance office. Have motion approve.
Come on.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion carried. Letter EE, action approve request to fill vacancy for a general maintenance worker in the commission department. Have a motion approve.
Come on.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Stacy, any more comments?
No, this was due to her resignation.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion carried. Item FF, action approve a publication of a supplemental budget hearing. Have a motion to approve.
Move approval.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Comments?
This is, as you, we've kind of discussed this as the year has gone on, we're going to need to do a supplemental budget resolution to move money first in the 301 or the capital fund for the finance office project. There was money budgeted last year for that project and due to some long lead times and some unforeseen things, that project is going to hopefully happen now, neck, this month. We're in April, this month. So we'll need that. There's the money in general fund that we had discussed previously about moving over to the 201 fund for the interchange project. And then there's some, also some dollars that rolled into fund balance in the highway fund for the river bridges down south that were budgeted last year. There's just some, a few more bills left to pay, not a whole lot left there, but that money needs to get supplemented. And then I'll also be sitting down and reviewing this before we actually do the publication and make sure that we're not missing anything. But this is basically you giving us the approval to go ahead and publish that notice when we're ready.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion carried. Item nine, commission department director's report.
I shot by Mike Roth. Included with my staff report was the executive summary from our project manager Chad Nelson at the jail expansion project. He gives kind of what, kind of the March, the March update there. So that was included in the packet. The rest of mine included the information on, the information that Sean had presented earlier. One thing that did come up since this was published was getting back into our Sioux Valley commission, commissioner meetings, our ten county meetings. They want to get those back rolling again. They planned the first one for May 12th, which is the same day we planned our full day work session next month. So I'm asking you, do we want to look for another date to reschedule that May 12th event so that you can attend the, the ten county meeting? Or do you want to forego the ten county meeting and attend the work, just keep the work session on as planned? What are your thoughts? I'm just looking for some direction on that. If so, I can try to pull together some dates and send those out to see if there's another time that we can get together for our, for our day-long event, or is that too hard to reschedule at this point? We're still five, six weeks out, so I wanted to pose that question to you.
Do we know where the ten county meeting is anticipated to be held?
No, I won't see an agenda until probably a week, a week and a half prior to that meeting. Um, since we haven't met for quite a while, I would anticipate there being some discussion on legislative session. Usually this would be, usually we would meet in March and they would invite legislators in to discuss the session. So I don't know if that piece would be on this agenda.
I think if it's held, we should probably be, probably should be there, so. I don't want it.
Why don't you sit down on another doodle pole?
Another doodle pole and see what I can line up.
See if I come up with anything that works.
Okay.
Yeah.
I will do that. Um, just a reminder too, as we had some upcoming dates I have on my report, make them a little bigger here. Next Tuesday isn't a commission meeting, but it is equalization boards and we'll be starting at eight thirty next Tuesday morning and you will be more, meeting as the board of equalization to hear any appeals and go through all of the, the, the things that need to be approved anyway. So regardless of appeals, there will still be a meeting to approve all of the reports. You'll be seeing an agenda probably later this week. Today is the deadline for those appeals, so we don't know what that looks like yet. And I don't know, I know Jenna works with Jacob, but I haven't heard anything on that. Um, next Wednesday, a week from this Wednesday, the fourteenth, we do the, have that award presentation from the South Dakota Center for Prevention of Child Malintreatment, the South Dakota Resilient Communities Initiative. That will be held here in the chambers at ten thirty on Wednesday, the fourteenth. And then we will X out the May 12th work session and I'll find a different date for that. So that's all I have unless you have any questions for me.
No. State's attorney report. Okay, Commissioner Pierce?
The last two weeks for me have been very active with public affairs. So on May twenty-second, I attended the mayor's forum for the candidates. On March twenty-fifth, the school board forum. On April first, we had a public affairs meeting. And I don't have the date written down for the post legislative meeting, Stacy, if you have that handy. And then April third, the, this last Saturday was the city council candidate forum. And I'm told that early voting started on Tuesday, I believe. And Jenna said that two hundred and sixty-two, two hundred and seventy-two people had voted as of five o'clock yesterday. So we're on our way. And that's all I have to report. But do you have that date?
I don't have that date. I think, did I send that out? I think I sent that out as an email. It was attached to the chamber chat. I will look for that again for that post legislative. They're doing it virtual and you do have to register, but there's no cost. So I think I had sent that out maybe last week, but I'll, I'll look for that again.
Mr. Bartley?
All right. March seventeenth and eighteenth, I attended the SDAC meeting in Pier along with fellow commissioners. Well-attended convention. I was, was surprised. It was very well attended and we had no issues and everything was kind of fun. Actually, learned a lot of stuff. On the twenty-third, I had a detention center meeting and that's going well. I stopped by there this morning and it's really, they've got some cement and they've got a roof, an apartment roof, and it's moving right along. We've got a temporary roof on the jail site. So we're going to be ready by the end of the month for the jail cells to arrive. So we're looking forward to that. The twenty-ninth, first district, marijuana update with Todd Case, an interesting discussion. And on the thirty-first, we had planning board training, which was well attended by all the planners. And I think the fact that we had some new people, that training session was really appropriate and a lot of questions got answered for a lot of people that somewhat new to, to planning and zoning and, and ex parte communications was covered at length. So we all understand the, the issue with that and who you can talk to and what you should do and what you should say and how you should recuse yourself if you need to. So that was good. And that's my report.
Could I just say that I found that on my calendar. It's Wednesday, the fourteenth next week is the post legislative luncheon by Zoom. I fear frowning, Stacy. That's, I haven't written on my calendar for that day.
I was just trying to think of what else was going on that day. That's in my mind. That's it.
No, the fourteenth next Wednesday, week before we meet again.
Mr. Krogman?
Yeah. Seventeenth and eighteenth of March, I was out in Pier for the spring workshop. And always get, it's been a while since I've been there, so chance to see some people I hadn't seen in a while and learn a few things as always. Twenty-fourth, we had our beta meeting and we're kind of in a standstill here for our garage, looking for a final report from our, our person we hired to put together the joint building facility and that should be coming out soon. But otherwise, we're kind of just waiting for that. The twenty-ninth was the BCOAC meeting. We discussed the new position. We also discussed planning for the future and put together a mission statement and things like that, agreed on, on those which will, are there. So we're getting a lot of things accomplished there in our meetings. And that was, got that one down to an hour, which was good. And moving along there. That's all I have.
Mr. Borzma?
Um, I was also at the SDACC conference on the seventeenth and eighteenth. And then when we got back on the eighteenth, spoke for Leadership South Dakota out at McCrory. On the twenty-second, had the four H promotion and expansioning, four H promotion and expansion listening session, as well as the mayor, mayor's forum. The twenty-fourth was the ICAP board meeting. Twenty-fifth moderated the school board forum. The second of April, we had a BEDC retreat task force meetings. We're kind of planning the strategic planning retreat. And then the third city council forum. So lots of stuff kind of in rapid sequence.
Okay. On the seventeenth and eighteenth, I attended the meeting out in Pier. It was, there was more people there than I thought would be there. It was very well attended and it was good, yeah, some very good subjects and topics were discussed out there. On the twenty-fifth, volunteered out at the SwifteL for the pod. It's, went very well. Everybody working good together. They've changed a few things. It goes pretty smooth. It's great to see all the volunteers and also the businesses that let the volunteers take time off from work to be there. Really, really good event. So on the twenty-ninth, attended the advisory board meeting at the BCOAC. I just about made it home and Stacy called me and I had a Samara Avenue meeting that I had completely spaced off. But we discussed some engineering firms for our project over there. On the thirtieth, I sat in on the bid opening for the Aurora County Road 23 project. And later in the day, I don't know if people are, March contracts or April contracts or delivering grain is coming in, but I had numerous calls and when the load limits are going off, they're, they should be happy now Brian lifted the load limits and they can haul their grain in. But that's all I have. Next on the agenda, executive session in accordance with South Dakota Codeified Law one dash twenty-five dash two parentheses one and parentheses four, personnel and contract negotiations. Have a motion to enter.
Come on.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. We'll enter into executive session. Have a brief recess.
Have a brief recess.
Be ready? And motion to come out of executive session?
I'm moved.
And motion of second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign, we're out of executive session. Item number thirteen, regular business continued. Action approved the bid for weed chemicals on all items listed from Van D Supply and Ag First Farmers Co-op. We have motion approved.
I'm moved.
Second.
Have motion of second? Any other comments? Hearing none, call roll please.
Orsma?
Aye.
Pierce? Bartley?
Aye.
Progman?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item fourteen, we have a motion to approve to adjourn.
I'm moved.
And motion of second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign, we are adjourned.